Hello, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting shorter, so I want to remind everyone that we are live captioning our meetings, so please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. We are going to convene a work session and we will hear a presentation from Graham Leach Bliley, an incident, did I say that correctly?
It's regarding the Graham Leach Bliley Act, a presentation by the Incident Response Team.
Thank you. Just wanted to ensure I was saying that correctly. So with that, for the record, though, I am going to call role of board members. Our student trustee is not able to attend this evening. From there, I'll go start at the end. Ms. Butler. Thank you, Dr. Norene.
Present.
Dr. Thor.
Present.
Ms. Bitter Smith.
Here.
Ms. Davis.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Present.
With my presence, all seven board members are present this evening. So with that, Dr. Gonzalez, would you please introduce our presenters? And oh, go Diamondbacks.
Thank you, President Sullivan, members of the board, members of CEC, faculty staff, and guests that are with us. We're going to hear a report here by our interim Chief Information Officer, Technology Services, Matt Reeves, Jim Curtis, Associate General Counsel, and Chief Privacy Officer Lisa Laird, Interim Director of Risk Management. And I also have Josh Bastian, is he here?
Dr. Gonzalez, is your microphone on?
Yes, it is.
There it is.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I introduced everyone, I hope that you could have, you heard that. All right, well, let's, let's, let's turn it over to them and take it from here. And despite with anybody actually believes, we are not watching the baseball game on that monitor in the back, okay?
So if there are cheers, that means you're cheering for this report or? So, good evening, everyone. I'm Matt Reeves, President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Dr. Gonzalez, CEC, and other guests here tonight. I'm Matt Reeves, the interim CIO for Information Technology Services, and we're here tonight to present our annual cybersecurity report covering Graham Leach Bliley Act in several different areas. Several members of the team are here to present as well. They'll be speaking throughout the presentation, so I'll turn it over to have them introduce themselves.
Hello, I'm Jim Curtin. I'm the Senior Associate General Counsel and Chief Privacy Officer and a member of the core Incident Response Team.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Laird, Interim Director of Risk Management and a member of the core IRT team.
And this is Joshua Bastian, Interim Chief Information Security Officer and member of the core Interim Response Team.
Thank you. Next page. Next page. Okay, so why are we here? Tonight is really about information sharing and awareness about our cybersecurity program and our compliance with GLBA requirements. What we'll cover today, I'll go through an executive summary. We'll talk a bit about the cybersecurity headlines and landscape, and then I'll turn it over to Jim and Lisa to cover the regulatory updates, requirements, issues and insurance updates for this area. And then Mr. Bastian and I will, will finish it off covering the cybersecurity program review for 2023. Next slide, please. So in terms of executive summary, so the reason we're here, the Graham Leach Bliley Act, the safeguards rules requires that the governing bodies are made aware of how well the institution complies with the GLBA requirements. Also, it requires us to provide an update to the governing body regarding the information security program and how it complies with internal as well as external standards and requirements. In terms of general updates here, we've completed a general review of the GLBA requirements for all the colleges that started last year. We actually just finished wrapping that up as well. We also completed a system-wide assessment, an IT assessment of all the colleges, district offices, while all 10 colleges participated in a very thorough assessment, and we'll cover some of that here. And then lastly, we are also ongoing right now with the Auditor General's Office with our annual IT audit, and that'll be wrapping up later this year. So those are the general main points for today's discussion. Next slide, please. So in this section, next slide, I will cover the cybersecurity headlines and landscape, because I think it's important as we think about GLBA and as we think about cybersecurity in general, I think it's important to understand the overall landscape and the headlines. So just to put it simply, cybercrime is big business. It's estimated that this year alone, you're looking at around $8 trillion of cybercrime costs. It's expected that those costs will increase 15% annually for the next three years. The education sector is a popular target, and you may be wondering why that is. The education sector is a popular target for a few reasons. One being that many institutions lack the resources, the expertise, the tooling to deal with existing and involving, and evolving threats. Threat actors also take advantage of easy access while it benefits, it's a benefit for us, right? We allow students in like a lot of other universities do, but what threat actors do, they take advantage of that benefit and they use it for very malicious reasons. So it is big business, as I mentioned, and it's something that we constantly have to monitor closely in terms of our approach, in terms of security for students, faculty, and staff. Next slide, please. This is a bit of an eye chart, but I wanted to talk a bit about some of the headlines around the education, education sector. So in general, ransomware continues to be the most popular attack in this, in the education sector. The frequency this year, you're looking at around 500 incidents of cyber attacks in the education sector, with about 240 cases where data was exposed and used. Some of the, the primary motives for the threat actors, mostly a financial gain, espionage as well. So the, so again, this is a not unique to Maricopa. It is a industry-wide concern, and these are the metrics from an independent report from Verizon covering data breaches in 2023. Next slide. Okay, so I'm sure everyone has heard about ChatGPT and generative AI and all the great tools that are out there using generative AI technology. Alexa, Google Assistant, Siri, all those capabilities use generative AI. It is one of the most fast, is one of the fastest growing adoption of technology in recent years, and Gen AI's future is evolving, is still being written. There are limited list possibilities, particularly in the higher education sector, but the same tools and the same benefits that we see from my education perspective, the threat actors are using those same capabilities to create new ways to steal data, steal identities. So, and so we expect, or the trends show that their abilities, while we are going to use the technology to enhance what we do as a service to the community, the threat actors will take that technology and use it for varying various reasons. So it's really an arms race that we're really, or that we're in with threat actors, and it's an ever-changing landscape. So as we look at the landscape and the threats, we have to look at it really in three dimensions. How fast the threat is, is, how near the threat is, how fast it's evolving, and what is the impact to the business, right? And so what we are doing in the IRT and my team and with the colleges is we need to categorize the threats and, and leverage the technology to combat them. So think about it this way, that chart at the bottom, the faster and closer a threat is, the less reaction time we have to address it. So Gen AI is going to be one of those capabilities. Gen AI, these security tools and solutions are going to be, those are capabilities that we'll be leveraging as well to combat threats that are evolving and changing. Next slide. So, so with that, with that landscape view and headlines view, we'll take you through the rest of this presentation, but I wanted you to see the, what it looks like from the headlines and the landscape in terms of the benefits of Gen AI, for example, but also the potential dangers that threat actors will use that technology against us, right? And so, so it's important, last thing, in the news, you've probably heard, like University of Michigan, so an example of a big university, serious, serious data breach. And so what we're doing, but our approach is definitely, as I said, trying to address that, get in front of it, leverage every capability that we have to protect students, faculty, and staff. And so with that, I will turn it over to Jim and Lisa to take us through the regulatory updates.
Thank you for that introduction. That was very thorough. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. President Sullivan, members of the governing board, Dr. Gonzalez, and other invited guests. Again, I'm Jim Curtin, Senior Associate General Counsel and Chief Privacy Officer for the district, and I get to speak to you about the fun stuff, the regulatory environment. And yes, you got to have a lawyer on every group to bore you to death. This, this should be interesting. The Graham Leach Bliley Act is, I'll try to make it interesting, I promise. So we're going to talk about the Graham Leach Bliley Act and something called the safeguards rule, which is a federal administrative regulation promulgated by the Federal Trade Commission, and it's now applicable to us. Graham Leach Bliley Act wouldn't have seemed like an act aimed at education when it was enacted 25 years ago. It was directed at banks, but the Federal Trade Commission took a more expansive view of that in recent years and realized that what the act is really about is protecting consumer financial data. So they looked at a bunch of other industries and came to the conclusion that higher ed should be included. Why higher ed? Two words, financial aid. Just like a car dealership, any other institution you go into where you give them your information, that's financial information, and they act on it in order to give you credit, give you a loan, whatever. So that, that's why there has been a change in the environment, and the brass tacks of it are that they came out with a proposed regulation several years ago, notified institutions and made it enforceable and implementable, implemented by June 9th of this past year. So it's a new set of regulations. We're used to the Department of Education, now we have to deal with Federal Trade Commission too. Next slide. The things to know about just the goals at a high level of the safeguards rule, it's about telling institutions that handle this data, follow these simple steps to protect the data, designate someone who's going to be responsible for it, know what kind of data you are gathering, know how you are gathering it, know what your controls are for accessing it, and, you know, understand what other applications and systems you have and how that might create a vulnerability and take steps to protect it. And most recently, a more specific directive that we have implemented, and Matt can speak to this, was implementing the multi-factor authentication when you log in. This is now applicable to students. It's been applicable to employees and faculty for about three years since shortly after the ransomware attack in March of 2021. And, you know, of course, last but not least, you have data, you no longer need it, dispose of it securely. Going, next slide, please. Going into the very specific elements of compliance with the GLBA, I've got very good news, that is that we have already implemented just about everything that the Federal Trade Commission now mandates. We have already had designated qualified individuals, as Matt indicated, we've been doing risk assessments. We do design and implement safeguards. We have regular meetings with the IT department to look at the directives on account access and how do we restrict it to the least possible or least necessary access. We do training, and we're going to be enhancing that in the next year, I think, as needed. We do the monitoring and testing both through the auditors, the state auditors, and other independent people who test our systems. And a subject that I'm going to talk a little bit more about in a little bit is we monitor service providers, the vendors we use who may host, access, or transmit sensitive employee or student data, whether it's in the HR field or somebody keeping record of student data for whatever reason. And the seventh element has also been around for many years, a written incident response plan, that's been in place here since 2015. And I have to tell you, I was here not too long when the ransomware attack occurred in March of 2021, and it was extremely helpful to have a plan and assign roles, assign responsibilities for making the decisions that had to be made, and we had to make them on the fly, but having a plan that told us how to do it was absolutely instrumental. And we have no reports that any data was accessed inappropriately. We shut down the ransomware attack, did cause a lot of havoc, but it was all a result of having a plan in place and acting quickly and appropriately. And then the last element is the fun one, because we have to report to you on an annual basis. This is an ongoing thing, you'll be hearing from us again. And in fact, we just talked to Elza, we were. Pardon? Yes, you are. I mean, I shouldn't have taken a federal regulation to get us in front of you. If you ask me, anyway. Next slide. So anyway, I want, I want to report that as of today and doing this report, we are in compliance with all of the elements of the Graham Leach Bliley Act and the safeguards rule.
Mr. Curt, may I ask you a question? On the compliance activities, how many of those came as a result of the March 21 experience 2021, or were all of those elements in place prior to?
I would say about 80% of them were in place, a lot of them were enhanced. So for example, the duo multi-factor authentication was brought in on a rapid basis and deployed very quickly because we made the determination we could not restart after the ransomware attack unless we had that additional security measure. So yeah, those things were enhanced, we did, I think we ramped up the penetration testing and the other external reviews of our own systems. We also did a thorough audit of all of the equipment at Maricopa during the shutdown period and determined that a number of devices were obsolete and couldn't be updated. So yes, I mean, it was a horrible attack, but it got us moving to really enhance our own security posture. I would say I'm not the best person to speak to that, Matt is, so, but yes.
And while I knew the previous one had caused us to revisit our activities in that space, and so I think that's why we were so well-prepared for '21. Remember that phone call? I'm looking to Dr. Gonzalez over there. And then, but I was curious how many of these other pieces then came as a result of, of that experience.
Well, the final piece was rolling out multi-factor authentication to the student body, and that was part of the requirement of safeguards rule. So we met that deadline, we were in place by June 9th. I will tell you that a lot of industries that found themselves subject to this, kind of surprisingly, were pushing back very hard on the Federal Trade Commission and asking for a delay in implementation, and they didn't get it. So, but that, that's why I'm happy to report, we did it.
And now you get to present to us, so that's great.
And now I get to present to you.
Well, anyway, thank you very much for that.
Absolutely. And to the point I was talking about with the service providers and monitoring them, that's become very critical because of the experiences we've had this year. In three instances, we've had service providers who have been hacked. It was not an intrusion into our systems, it was their systems, most notably Connect, which was a healthcare provider under the Aetna plan that we have for health benefits for employees and dependents, and involved about 7,800 records and involved PII. The second one was actually, the second and third ones were actually a result of a much bigger breach called MoveIt, and it's capital move IT. If you look it up, it may be the largest hack of the last several years. Approximately 600 companies and 180 million personal records were hacked or compromised because of that hack. Fortunately, our experience through MoveIt affected just two companies, the National Student Clearinghouse, which does sort of a clearinghouse for transcripts and educational records, and that didn't involve any PII. There was only names and, but no social security numbers, no passwords, no emails. So it was a lot of records, not a lot of risk. The TIAA craft was also part of that. So MoveIt is a file sharing platform. If you want your bank to send information to another bank or to this or that, you need a secure way to transmit it, and MoveIt was basically considered the gold standard in secured encrypted file transfer, and they got hacked. And so what happens is that all of these people who are dependent on this one platform, MoveIt, now have to look back, can they patch it? Can they make it safe? But, you know, this is something that we fortunately didn't employ a MoveIt file sharing platform, we just had vendors who did. The, the second breach with, under MoveIt was the TIAA craft. From what we can determine now, that was only 150 employees or retirees. It did not involve data that the district supplied to TIAA craft. This was individual employees enrolling through ASRS, State Retirement System.
So, thank you.
Yeah, and it's, you know, this is a very important part of this, has become a much more important part of this compliance matrix that we're looking at. And the next slide, because we have to look at what are our expectations with these vendors when this happens? And in all three of those incidents, we had commitments from the vendors, from Connect, from TIAA Craft, and from National Student Clearinghouse. They will handle the notifications to the students, they will handle notifications as needed to state and federal authorities, and where PII is involved, they will provide each individual affected with access to resources like credit blocking, monitoring, access to reviewing the dark web to see if you've got any information out there. You may have gotten letters if you are enrolled in healthcare from Connect and their, their security providers, that would have been sent in late August, early September. And I don't have a slide for this before I turn it over to Lisa, but I do want to talk also about what we do prospectively, not just what we expect them to do on the backend. When we are about to consider working with a service provider or vendor who's going to have access to data, we do three very key things. We do a review of their security controls and review their audits in what's called a SOC 2 report, SOC 2, type 2 report, prepared by an external auditor. We look for what they have been, been able to identify as vulnerabilities. Have they updated their servers? Are they training their employees, et cetera? We secondly, require a contractual indemnification in the event of a security incident on their system. And third, we require them to have cyber insurance to cover that, to cover their indemnification obligations and the cost of handling these incidents, because we don't want a financially insolvent company giving out our data and then not being able to handle the cost of remediation. And I say about this, this is not just something to comply with the federal regulations. This is capping and monitoring and managing a potential financial liability for us. As Lisa is about to tell you, the cost of planning for and trying to defend against these incidents, as well as the cost of responding to them, have been incremented astronomically increasing over the last several years. So this part, I want to hand it over to Lisa to talk about the insurance. Welcome, any questions either now or at the end? Yes?
Mr. Curtin, I, I appreciate you telling us that prospectively, as you bring new vendors on, you have these requirements and that luckily, the incidents that have happened, those requirements were already in place. Are there any existing vendors that do not have these protections as part of their contractual arrangement with us?
We occasionally look at renewal contracts for, for example, smaller IT vendors who might be doing some consulting work at a particular college, and who knows how they got in there, but it may be small dollar, but they still have access to our system. We then go back and say, you know, we can't renew this, you need to get cyber insurance. And more and more players in the market understand this is a requirement. I would say four or five years ago, a lot of vendors would have pushed back when we tell them, we need you to have cyber insurance and name us as additional insured. Some still push back on amounts and types of insurance, but they understand they've got to have cyber insurance, it's in their own best interest if they really want to be in this market. So, yes.
So again, just so that, that I'm clear, I think you're telling me that no, there's no vendors that have access to our system now that don't have.
I'm not aware of any, there might be some in the system that might be up for renewal. We try to keep the renewals to one to two years, but for example, we also do a review of those SOC 2 reports, we require them every year. So.
So there's an answer. Thank you.
Absolutely, and I'm not going to say all the holes are patched, but we're trying. Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and now Lisa Laird, the Interim Director of Risk Management.
And, and I just want to remind us we're at six o'clock, so I know we have a lot of incredible information to go through here, just watching clock, thank you.
Okay. President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, and guests, I'm just going to speak very briefly about insurance costs and our coverages and how these cyber incidences have impacted those over the last few years. So every year, we submit an agenda item for our insurance renewal, and that's for all of our coverages. In that, we limit the view window to two years, the current policy, and then the upcoming policy and where those premiums are. For this presentation, I wanted to expand that to a much larger window of four years, just to show and highlight the impact that cyber events have caused the district when it comes to the cost for our insurance coverage, as well as the limits that our coverage went from and where it's at now. So from the table presented here, you can see that just a few years ago in policy year 2021, we had a very relatively small self-insurance retention, which is basically your deductible. That's something that the district pays before it ever goes to our insurance carriers. So at $500,000 for the size of this organization, it's actually a relatively small number. But during that year, that policy year, we had $30 million in coverage based on those three layers for just under $360,000. Then you look at 2021 and 22 policy years, and we've seen an astronomical increase. Our self-insurance retention went from $500,000 to $2.5 million. And our coverages were cut in half. And there was nothing that we can do. The insurance carriers were not offering us any options, even to add additional layers. It would have been too cost prohibitive for the district to, to move forward with that. So the reason that the insurance carriers did this is was because they're, they were losing profits. So what they did is they sort of shifted course, spiked those premiums so that they could, could be solvent again and, and make that wonderful profit that they so love. Fortunately, this current policy year, we've seen it stable out a little bit. Our self-insurance retention has gone down by a million dollars, which is helpful for the district, and our premiums only nominally increased. This was something that we would expect to see in a year-to-year category increase. These threats, cyber threats continue as, as the technologies advance almost daily. And so we see this as being a continual spiral upward instead of downward where we'd like it to be. Next slide, please. So just looking at where we're at on our insurance coverages and where our limits have dropped to with down to 15 million. This, this graph shows IBM's annual report for what it costs per record for an organization depending on the, the data breach and the information that was, was attacked. And as you can see, for customer, including the PII, you're talking $183 per record. When you look at our customers here at the district, those are our students, and when you take into account the number of students we have and the potential loss that could be sustained, it's, it's amazing that our IT group, the IRT our I T group, the I R T, the the regulations, the district and the board have been so proactive in making sure that we are protected from that. So with that, I will pass that over to Mr. Matt Reeves.
All right, next slide. Well, thank you. So we're baseball comparison. We're in the late innings here. So for this presentation. And so from here on, Josh Bastian and I will take you through a review of the cybersecurity program for this year. So next slide, please. When we look at our program, we use a framework called CARE. And it's meant to determine if your security program, cybersecurity program is consistently applied across your organization if the controls were adequate compared to the requirements it's being based on. If it's reasonable, given business needs, and then ultimately if it's effective or not. And so the next set of slides here, we're going to walk through the CARE framework and how we've used it to determine whether or not our our cybersecurity program is credible and defensible. I will put a couple of caveats. One, that as you've heard, you've seen the headlines we talked about, there's no perfect security system. Right? What we do and what a lot of security companies do in universities and businesses do is leverage technology, the human shield, the human firewall, all aspects to protect company data, customer privacy and identity. So as I mentioned earlier, it is an arms race, but there's just want to make sure that everyone, as you go through this, you will see that there's nothing perfect. It's a it's a race to implement the technology as best we can to defend against, react to and mitigate threats. The other piece of a caveat would be is that we have a distributed system, meaning that we have the colleges, I T teams, the district office, I T teams. We work together collectively in our security program. So the data that you see here, a lot of it reflects the college assessment in terms of our view around where we are. And so I just want to put that out there because some of the things I'll talk about at the end revolves around some ideas around what's happening from a trend perspective in terms of operating models for security. So with that, I will turn it over to Josh Bastian to take us through the next set of slides. Josh?
Thank you, Matt. President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez and other attendees. Thank you for allowing me to attend from Fort Worth virtually. I appreciate that. Next slide, please. So from measuring our consistency, you're going to see a number of data points here. There are more for sake of time, we're going to cover some of the high end discussions. So one of the more prominent right now in in our environment and some of the ones discussed are the topics around phishing campaigns and awareness. Right now, the percentage of employees enrolled in all the phishing simulations program is 100%. The next item down, phishing program success. These two numbers, the first one, 4% and the 15% are internal and and basically global. So based on the simulated phishing attempts in failure rates or click rates, it's at 15% as an industry benchmark. We at Maricopa are at 4%, 4%, sorry, which is a pretty good number. We can go down into the endpoint protection. So of those assets that are in scope, we are 100% protective with anti-virus malware and or other scanning mechanisms. I will jump off, and again, you guys can read through some of these, and we can always refer back to them at a later date. Detection and response, we are at 100% detection and response time from a time of a report or an alert all the way through, depending on the path. It could be as simple as a password reset with a student all the way through the incident response team process. And then if you look at threat vulnerability and management, there's two categories there. At this point in time, all in scope systems are being scanned. All critical systems are being represented in a dashboard. And that's at all 11 locations of 10 colleges in the district office. And all this, the systems being managed, the vulnerabilities being identified and or managed to remediation are being monitored at 100% ratio. Next slide. So how how are we measuring the adequacy? So for the metrics in the in this use case, we're talking about internal policy compliance, external policy compliance, and then the protection level agreement and achievement. So how do we measure these? Well, our directives are all written to support the business needs as well as to try to ensure we meet compliance and regulatory requirements. External policy compliances can be G O B A safeguards, NIST 800 dash 171 is what we measure our overall security controls to, and then the C I S benchmarks. And then for our protection level agreements, we've achieved endpoint protection 100% with the anti-malware definitions deployed. Detection and response, we're at 100% with threats that are detected with signatures updated. And then for the vulnerability management program, we're at 100% of assets regularly patched. Next slide. So now we're at the reasonable reasonableness of part of the CARE framework. So these metrics are measured in delays, incidents and exceptions or exemptions. Part of that is the evidence we get for delays is the average delay or wait time for a new for new access. We're up to about a 24 hour mark on average. The average latency in authentication caused by M F A is about 15 to 30 seconds. And then we have vulnerability management, the average downtime required for patching and production servers is limited to 30 minutes or seven hours, depending on the system and if it's done over the weekend. Incidents, everything has been escalated. There have been a number of incidents that were. I'm sorry, my 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 misread there. We've had a number of incidents caused by the control that is imetrically escalated. There's been less than five incidences that have been caused by a control that we have implemented. That's pretty low. And then for the exemptions of vulnerability management, the number of patching exemptions or extensions, we are at less than 10% of all managed endpoints. What that means is if we can't do a patch, if there's a technological limitation or any number of things, we document the why, where, when and how. And then for endpoint protection, the number of managed endpoints with anti-malware exceptions is less than 5%. That typically is down to a level of like an alertis, an emergency system, or maybe a student lab in some cases. Next slide. So how how's the effectiveness of these? So we measure this and control timelines and incident prevalence. There's a lot of data here, so we're going to just kind of stick to a couple because I know we're running out of time. Identity, the average number of days to disable access is approximately 120 days. Detection and response, we are down to less than 30 minutes. Endpoint protection, the average number of hours taken to detect malware and manage endpoints is less than 30 minutes. And that's probably far lower, but you get one or two exceptions that raises that number a little bit. And then you have vulnerability management, the average number of days taken to patch critical security vulnerabilities is about 72 hours. That's from test, validation and implementation. We can go ahead and go to the next slide. So we wanted to do 2023 a year in review. In the first quarter and July between, I'm sorry, between July and August, we had the Cisco Duo added enterprise security E A. The Duo M F A for students, planning and preparation. The G O B safeguards rule analysis, and then we started the phishing awareness and campaign. Through second quarter, I'll just touch on a couple of them. We expanded on the Duo M F A, helped us training Duo early open enrollment. Another one is the fish alert button was launched. So if you see something that appears to be not legitimate or what you want to deem as a fish, it doesn't hurt to just go ahead and report it. It'll let you know. I'm going to move on to Q three. We then launched Duo M F A for students. And then we had the business alignment for Duo M F A rollout on all student apps. Moving into Q four, TikTok restrictions became enforced after a lot of discussion. Duo M F A for students on all apps was finalized. Necessus Risk Sense V M adoption, that is, that goes back to the vulnerabilities in the dashboard I discussed earlier. And then privileged access management, the delineate cloud implementation, which was an on premise privileged access management system, allowing certain users that needed or required access to critical systems with confidential data. Access to those in a secure manner. Next slide. All right. So future plans and objectives. We're looking at the enhancement, examining new opportunities, partnering with all the colleges. That is to develop gen AI strategies and use cases. There are a number of boards and and committees started on that as we speak. Thankfully to those people starting those off, I was invited to one of them. Increase awareness on security of internal and external data sharing and increase scrutiny on the vendors' compliance with the G O B safeguard rules, which Jim Curtin talked about earlier. So our responsive ecosystems, we're looking at threat exposure management and and threat intelligence. Identity fabric, community and cybersecurity validation. Restructuring approaches, the cybersecurity platform consolidation, cybersecurity operational operations model transformation and composable security. Excuse me, rebalancing practices. It's the human sector, security design, something that we're working on now. Enhanced people management and increasing board oversight, part of what we're doing today. And something that I agree with with Jim needs to be ongoing regardless of G O B A. So at this time, I want to let Matt, if you want to chime in and kind of cover anything you think needs to be added there before we go to any questions.
Yes, thanks. Thanks, Josh. So yeah, just to end it, thank you again for your time today. That that chart at the bottom represents cybersecurity trends in 2023 from an industry perspective. So as we do think about the evolving and changing nature of cybersecurity threats in the industry, it's important that we as an institution begin to think like this as well in terms of a responsive ecosystem. What Jim was describing earlier around the partners, it's it's no longer, it's no longer just an internal control. We we have, we rely on partners. That's a that's a part of the ecosystem. So how well the partners defend against threats, how they apply G O B A requirements to their systems, how adaptive we are to threats is really important as as we move forward here. From a, the restructuring approaches that really is talking about when you think about the fast moving technology, our hybrid model of work, how gen A I has come onto the scene, we have to think and act differently. We have to look at our operating model. We have, as I mentioned earlier, we have a distributed operating model. So we have to, a lot of companies are looking at distributed nature of resources, the technologies they use and how the landscape is changing, the tools that are being used. And there's a lot of consolidation happening in the marketplace as well because of that. And lastly, I want to elaborate on the 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 redefining practices piece. Really, it revolves around for many, many years. Its technology has been viewed as a silver bullet to all problems. What we have to do in this landscape as a business is to think people, process and technology. The human centric part of our model is the the threat actors take social engineering, phishing, those behaviors, those are the areas where now it's a combination of capabilities with people and technology to defend against the next, the threat that are out there. And the the board oversight point is really about the the number of regulations that are coming out, the insurance points that Lisa was mentioning as well. That's why the the point around increased board oversight is governance oversight is very important as well. So as we think about moving Maricopa forward in this in this brave new world, one is that these are the areas that from an industry perspective, we need to think holistically about in terms of our approach. I believe fully that gen A I is going to revolutionize how we do business in Maricopa and the world. So we have to, what I, that point I brought there up there around partnering with the colleges is to work on a strategy because there's many, 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 many use cases that we can leverage and to benefit Maricopa. So with that, again, I want to thank you all for your time today. And if there are any questions, feel free to ask them. I know we presented a lot of data, so we're happy to come back. We, in a in a private executive session, we're happy to go through methods and tactics if you'd like to understand more about some of those metrics as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reeves. Board members, okay, I know you're ready to go. And Dr. Thor, any other questions? Dr. Marie or Ms. Butler? Any questions, Ms. Smith, Ms. Davis? All right, Dr. Thor and then Ms. Fitter Smith.
Could you give me an example of where generative A I would be used in a, as a positive benefit to our cybersecurity?
Mrs. Mrs. Thor, thank you very much for your question, Dr. Thor. So examples would be behavior analysis, analyzing profiles of certain characteristics. It could also be used to diagnose a series of events that may to the human may not appear connected, but the technology can pull all those pieces together really quickly and generate a threat analysis very quickly for you.
Thank you, Ms. Fitter Smith.
Thank you, President Sullivan. I think this is for Mr. Reeves. I'm not sure. This was very helpful and I appreciate this. There's one other element of these attacks that we obviously encountered when it happened to us in 2021. And that's how do we communicate to the impacted parties? Is that that message strategy, is that part of what your department is looking at as well? Be they faculty members or students or whatever body has had their data potentially impacted?
Certainly. And this is where we call into account our insurance carriers. They provide us with a lot of resources in these events, including communications resources like companies that do nothing but take your list of people who need to be notified. They prepare the notifications. We bless them. They go out. We have a call center set up usually, again, through a recommendation from the insurance carrier. And we also have, of course, outside counsel that guides us all along the way about who also needs to be notified, whether it be a regulator at the state or federal level. So yeah, there are resources on the bench that are ready for these events. Unfortunately, they get a lot of practice.
And I just a quick thought, I presume that's part of the protocol that you're discussing earlier. That's part of the process when you're hiring a vendor or renewing a vendor.
Correct. And you know, internally, I would say this is something we should really focus on in terms of doing like a tabletop exercise for a lot of people within the the organization. The four of us can do this in our sleep now, unfortunately, because but we don't get much sleep. So but it would be helpful for people at all levels to understand exactly what steps need to be taken and what their roles will be.
Thank you. Thank you. I have one question. You mentioned as in your summary comments, the idea of regulations, governance concerns. Are you seeing it in the opening or any way that this governing board needs to look at additional policies or new policies, revised policies as we govern it to address some of these concerns? And I see a nodding. And so the answer is yes. So could you explain just a little bit more about what that might be so that we can do our due diligence in our job?
It starts with what we're doing here today. We're making you aware of the of the landscape. But it also, we have to come back and take a look at our incident response team. It hasn't been updated in maybe a year, year and a half. We need to do it on a regular basis. Now that we have things like generative A I, does that mean some additional steps? We have to look at our I T directives. Matt and I and Josh and I are reviewing our I T directives. It's been weekly for the last several months. But it's all drilling down all of these steps and then bringing the information back up to you. I think it would be wonderful if we could do a tabletop presentation with you, members of the board at some point. So you understand what it's like. You get the call, you make the call to the carrier, you get ready, get a response ready to inform the the students, you deal with the public, you deal with the press, things like that.
So that would then come out of the legal department. I'm looking at you, Ms. Falkenberg. So working with Mr. Reeves, it would seem to me that it, since we look at or we're trying to look at our policies annually, that though more recently we've been doing it on an ongoing basis, it would be important that we have some sort of policy schedule, review schedule so that we could ensure that we're meeting the concerns that this could present. Am I stumbling through that comment? Am I stumbling through that comment? Board members, does that make sense to you?
I think it's very clear. And we'll take that directive and run with it.
Yeah, I don't want to find us unprepared from an operational standpoint, but simultaneously to protect our liability concerns or anything. I think it's imperative that we look at our governance responsibilities to this as well so that we're prepared.
And that is a point stressed by the FTC when they rolled this out. They want boards of directors, governing boards to be involved in these processes and understand the risk.
Yeah, we don't want to be in your operational weeds, but we certainly want to be upfront and present when it comes to government's policies, particularly if we have to react to a situation as or be proactive. And I do want to acknowledge that the cost of the insurance is certainly a concern, but we want to stay protected. And as we're looking at our budgeting, we recognize that this always is an important aspect of our money management. So thank you. Board members, do you have any other comments or questions? With that, Dr. Gonzalez, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Thank you, President Sullivan. Thanks again for the opportunity to have this presentation done today.
Sure, thank you. And as everyone knows, when it comes to being a geek, I'm lowercase in italics, meaning no, I shouldn't be there. So anyway, thank you very much for this presentation. Everyone, I'm going to adjourn the work session. It is 6:29 according to the clock present. I would like us to have five minutes, rearrange ourselves. I know we have some guests with the Lynda B. Rosenthal mentoring group. We'd like to invite them into the room. And I think I would like us to reconvene at six, as close to 6:35 as possible. Also, we have coffee, grab coffee, whatever it takes. We'll be back. Thank you. Thank you again for the presentation. In the meantime, I'm going to again announce that we are live captioning our meeting. That if you're interested, please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you'll find a link. And so please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. Problem solved. So at this time, I call to order the regular meeting of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board for October 24, 2023. For the record, again, I'm going to call all of board members, noting that Mr. Bernat, our student trustee, is not able to be with us this evening. Ms. Butler, are you present?
Present.
Ms. Davis?
Present.
Dr. Noreen?
Present.
Ms. Smith?
Present.
Dr. Thor?
Present.
Ms. Bitter Smith?
Here.
And with my presence, all seven board members are present. Now I'd like to call your attention to our screens where Dr. Thor will recite the Pledge of Allegiance, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Thank you. There aren't any substitutions this evening, so I'm going to leap us into student life reports. And this evening, we have students from Glendale Community College, so I'd love to have you come front and center to our podium with your leader and introduce yourselves. And we're eager to hear from you this evening. Thank you for joining us.
Like I was saying, good evening, President Sullivan, members of the governing board, Chancellor Gonzalez, Dr. Hernandez, members of C E C and guests. My name is Luis Fregoso and I am the Peer Success Coach Coordinator at Glendale Community College. It is our honor to present our year in review for you this evening. I am accompanied by a few of our peer success coaches to discuss our programs, continued efforts and accomplishments.
Hello, my name is Danella Collin, one of the junior lead peer success coaches. The Glendale Community Peer Success Coach Program was launched in spring 2022 to provide all incoming and continuing students with one-on-one holistic support as an effort to increase retention and develop a stronger sense of belonging at GCC. By identifying the best practices of the Excel program, we built our program's mission off the three pillars of support. Connect to engage, refer to retain and coach to achieve. The goals of the Peer Success Coach Program are to increase engagement through connection, provide specific opportunities and resources as identified by either student or coach, facilitate referrals to critical personnel in response to financial and academic needs and coach in areas of academic success, time management and self advocacy to increase persistence and retention. The program is accessible to all students regardless of their program, age, ethnicity or gender. We provide coaching in areas that the students choose, whether that relates to academic and professional development or personal growth. Students are supported in reaching both short and long-term goals. They are encouraged to share details about their academic and personal life so that best fit opportunities can be found. We are focused on both academic success and non-academic outcomes, including connection and belongingness.
Hello, my name is Warvis Gilmore Jr. I'm the lead peer success coach. We have facilitated events that highlight the challenges of entering higher education, including the power of connection, success through networking event, as well as a workshop on identifying and preventing academic burnout. Next slide. In an effort to address the intersectionality of our students' complex lives, we have created a direct link to the resources on campus that supports 60% of students that experience at least one of the following. Students expressing food insecurity, 43%, students experiencing homelessness representing 14%, and students experiencing housing insecurity representing 53% of the challenges students are facing. We often help students complete a GCC financial assistance application and other scholarship and financial assistance opportunities within the district. We've also submitted a GCC care report that goes into the behavioral intervention team for additional assessment and student support. Next slide.
Can I ask you to explain the difference between homelessness from this perspective and housing insecurity?
Yeah, so in our case with the students that we have been working with, housing insecurity can be students that are struggling to make payments on time, whereas homelessness are those that have found themselves without a home.
Perfect. Thank you. I mean, not perfect, but thank you.
Thank you. Next slide. The efforts of the peer success coaching are furthered through our collaborations with other departments like tabling at events around campus and working with GCC's marketing team to promote our program through social media. Instructors across campus have invited our coaches to present on the program at the beginning of their classroom sessions each semester. In March, we launched a website that students use to access information about our program and coaches. In that time, there had been over 1,113 unique views to our page with 237 of those people clicking with additional links to, clicking into additional links that we have provided. Of those 237 unique clicks, 105 went to our program sign up form. This slide also showcases two of our most recent videos posted on the GCC Instagram and the number of views on those videos. Thanks to these partnerships, we have created meaningful relationships between the peer success coaches and our student body. Next slide.
Our institutional effectiveness team provides student demographic data used for measuring metrics. We have discovered that students who are matched in our coaching program demonstrate higher retention rates than those who are not. The proportions of the fall 2022 cohort that were retained to the spring 2023 semester, the fall to spring retention and to the fall 2023 semester, fall to fall retention, were compared with those measures for the overall college. For the fall 2022 to spring 2023 retention rate, 78% of the students that had a peer success coach persisted. This was 14 percentage points higher than the GCC average persistence rates for fall to spring. Next slide. For the fall 2022 to fall 2023 retention rate, 53% of the students who had a peer coach in fall 2022 are enrolled in fall 2023. This is 11 percentage points higher than the overall college fall to fall persistence rate of 42%. Next slide, please. We are very strategic in reaching students that have been traditionally underserved in higher education. In the Peer Success Coach Program, Latinx students are 53% of our population, 12 percentage points higher than the Glendale Community College percentage. Next slide. The number of first generation students participating in our program is 8 percentage points higher than the average at GCC. Next slide. On average, 32% of students are full-time and 68% part-time in the Peer Success Coach Program. 1 percentage point difference in the overall GCC data. One of our biggest opportunities has been reaching male students. GCC has 44% males and our program has 30% males. Next slide, please. More than half of our student participants in this program identify as Latinx. In our short existence, we have exceeded our goals of retention and persistence, positively impacting the students we're intending to support to completion. We've had a lot of interest in our program matching and supporting over 800 students in the first year. Next slide, please. And half of our program's existence, the most important method may be our internal matching survey, which allows us to create connections between the coaches and mentees using over 100 points to ensure compatibility. In the last four months alone, we have had 673 conversations with our students, almost two thirds of which were chat or email exchanges. More than half of the overall total, 381, were through text and generated more than 4,500 chat bubbles. In over 50 email conversations, we had almost 300 unique messages. Next slide, please. The general topics covered by these conversations were academics, career, hobbies, school life, staying balanced, other stressors and general information as identified by the coaches. Another successful data point was the analysis of engagement by demographics. The Hispanic slash Latinx students that were highly engaged with three or more significant conversations with their coaches per semester was 42%, 7 percentage points higher than the average across the nation. Next slide, please. We would like to thank you for this opportunity to present our year in review to you this evening and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Don't go away. Board members, do you have any comments or questions? Ms. Davis?
President Sullivan, I would like to congratulate these students on this hard work. This is so, this is such a great, such great outcomes. I'm so pleased.
That's it? Any, any other comments?
I have a question. Do the peer coaches receive an hourly wage?
Yes.
And do you have intentions to grow the program and then related, are any of the positions supported philanthropically through grants?
So currently, we are funded through the institution and then we also hire federal work studies students. And we do have a plan to grow the program. Each semester, we are actively recruiting as our students, as our coaches eventually graduate and move on as well. We hire on more students that are currently studying at Glendale Community College or have recently graduated.
Thank you. And then a note for the chancellor. I think something that would be helpful when we learn about programs like this would be to have a comparison across the 10 colleges to get a sense of whether all the colleges are also using peer coaching. And then those that are not, we might want to know why because it seems to be really effective. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Looking this way, Ms. Butler, did you have any questions? Comment? Dr. Noreen?
Thank you. This is great. I've done a lot of my graduate work on retention and Vincent Tinto would be proud of you guys. Couple of questions. Do you see an increase with your peer mentor? Do you see an increase in their retention as well? With the peer mentors?
Could you elaborate on the question?
So the, you had the students who are, who are the students who are the coaches, coaching other students, correct? And so do you see an increase in their retention rate?
Certainly, we definitely, when we are recruiting, we get a lot of interested applicants that are achieving high success academically. And so certainly I believe that by being involved and engaged with these students, it just furthers that motivation to continue with their own education and reach those aspirations.
Great. And the other thing is, do you, were you able to track the students that you're mentoring? Was there an increase in the number of credits they enrolled in through this program as they, as they progress through the program? Is that's one of the data points that you collected?
I don't have the exact numbers for that, and I do believe that it varies. What I do know is that they are feeling more comfortable after the conversations that they've had with our coaches and enrolling for the next semesters. And they are making great choices with the class selections, understanding their limits that they have when it comes to taking courses and what they can handle. And they are showing success.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. I'm Ms. Bitter Smith. I also want to add my congratulations to you for a fine program. You're definitely making the difference for student success. We're glad to be partnering with you. And if there are other things that we can do to encourage your activities in your work, we stand behind you. I also would like to agree with Ms. Smith that it's a great opportunity to look for other revenue generating support. And I know with the philanthropic folks sitting in our second row over here, that they're probably writing that down right now. Except for the person who, no, I'm kidding, Carolyn. Anyway, so thank you. And this is very important work. And I know that we definitely would love to see this expanded. I expect other colleges are doing similar work. You're leading the way. So thank you for this. Congratulations again, everyone. Let's go.
Thank you again, everybody.
Thank you to the students over here. Thank you. Come back. We now have the report from the Faculty Executive Council. Dr. Lisa Mercia.
Always have to adjust this thing for my size. Ucran, Ambera, member du consac d'Amistre, chancelier, collègue de C E C, honored students, guests, jumbo. And welcome back, Madam President. You have saved me from brushing up on my college Latin.
I heard that.
Spooky season is upon us. Rooted in the ancient Celtic and Aztec traditions of ancestor veneration, we are a week away from Samhain, Halloween, All Saints' Day and Dia de los Muertos. Regardless of its name or origin, a common thread runs through these traditions, much like the tendrils of smoke. You see it? Yeah, okay. Much like the tendrils of smoke curling lazily through the air, the veil between this world and the next becomes sheer as gossamer and spirits can travel back and forth freely. As much as I would like, this is not a lecture on comparative religion, but rather a framework to reflect upon and reaffirm our commitment to the principle of transparency. When I speak of transparency, I speak of openness, honesty and clarity and communication and decision-making. I speak of a principle that is integral to the establishment and endurance of trust. As we face both legislative and fiscal challenges in the near future, these are two things that we must endure, must ensure do not fall to the wayside. Community colleges serve as critical pillars of education, providing accessible pathways to of success for a diverse range of students. To ensure the effective functioning and equitable delivery of education, transparency is paramount. It fosters trust, demonstrates accountability, encourages stakeholder engagement and above all drives student success. Trust is the cornerstone of any successful educational institution. Open communication regarding our collective actions and decisions will reassure our students, faculty, staff and the broader community that their interests are considered and protected. In this context, then, transparency is a pledge to share information, policies and decisions openly. Transparent processes and decision-making mechanisms enable to hold others accountable. When individuals are aware of how decisions are made, they are better positioned to question, challenge or support than is necessary. Transparency promotes inclusivity and diversity and empowers us to participate in informed decision-making processes. Whether it's a new academic program, a policy change or resource allocation, involving stakeholders in the decision-making process ensures that the district's actions align with the needs and expectations of involving stakeholders in the decision-making process ensures that the district's actions align within needs and expectations of their community. Ultimately, the primary mission of the community colleges to foster student success. Transparency plays a pivotal role in this endeavor. When students and families have access to clear information about programs, financial aid, and support services, they can make well-informed decisions about their educational journeys. We have made incredible strides down this path. Examples that come tonight are the work both ongoing and accomplished among governing board members, staff, administration, and faculty in our district-wide strategic plan, benefits options, and compensation package. Granted, transparency can be tedious and time-consuming. I'm sure we have all thought at least once, couldn't this have just been an email? But on behalf of faculty, we want to thank you for the work you have done and continue to do to reaffirm our collective commitment to this principle. I will close with a haiku on transparency. Clear truth shines within transparency's radiant light. Honesty prevails. Thank you.
Thank you. Given those are our values, I appreciate you calling those out. Thank you. Uh, with that, we now have the adjunct faculty report, Ms. Boje, if I pronounced, mispronounced your name.
It's, it's Boje, think of beige except with an O, although I'm not a beige person, so.
I promise I will try again.
It is a bastardized German name that the French Canadians couldn't pronounce, so.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, President Sullivan, uh, governing board members, uh, Chancellor Gonzalez, and also our guests that are here tonight. Uh, first of all, I would like to apologize and ask for the grace where am I missing the last meeting? The nail in my tire decided that it had other plans for me that evening and, you know, those things sometimes just take precedence.
I wasn't here.
Okay, then.
But it wasn't due to a nail.
I will bring you up to date on what we've been doing with the adjunct faculty group. Uh, our group met most recently October fourteenth for our regular board meeting. Uh, we invited Gail Haas to join us to discuss the tiers, uh, program and the adjunct faculty professional growth programs, so that our reps would be better prepared to answer questions for their constituents on their campuses. There have been some questions about the tiers and why we started where we did and why isn't everybody included at a higher rate? And so we're trying to deal with that and find the most equitable way to let people understand that we had plans for this for a certain reason. Uh, we are also currently planning several town hall meetings with the intent of gathering information for updates on the, uh, for the adjunct faculty handbook, uh, as well as decision-making regarding compensation and budget planning. Uh, one of our town halls will be regarding the tiers and compensation. Uh, the other will be used in guided topics for information gathering, including working conditions, conflict resolution, and the role of shared governance for adjunct faculty. Uh, I'm working with other district members to help facilitate these, uh, discussions, and we're currently planning our dates, so I don't have a date to share for that yet. Uh, regarding issues of compensation, as we all know, budget has been of the utmost importance lately, and so we've been having, we've been reviewing data and engaging in very vibrant discussion, uh, and brainstorming to craft ideas and develop plans for ways that we can best offer compensation often, options that are going to benefit all the adjunct faculty. And we will be meeting with other district members to bring forth some ideas that we can move up the ladder and see how we can affect change in that area. Uh, currently, we have elections going on for four representatives at four of the different colleges, Phoenix, South Mountain, Estrella, and Gateway. Uh, we have several, uh, people who have nominated themselves, and we are waiting for a few more to come in before we close the elections and, or close the, uh, the nomination period and move on to elections. I hope to have that resolved in the next few weeks and be able to, uh, have a full board again to work on things. I would also like to highlight tonight the work of our Scottsdale Community College adjunct representatives. They have held a successful adjunct faculty appreciation night recently, along with a dinner, a raffle of, uh, uh, SCC swag, and, uh, they said it was most successful, and they're, they're pleased with the outcome from that. We are also currently seating, uh, many of our reps on different districts and college committees, including search committees and other, everything from AI to, uh, oh, gosh, I'm gonna have to think, a list of about half a dozen at least on the, off the top of my head, and I'm not going to be able to name them all right this moment. Apart from that, we've been doing some, uh, serious work with our adjunct faculty handbook team. And in addition to compensation issues, we're covering some other, uh, topics that we will be informing you about as we develop our program more with that. And I'd like to thank you for, again, for the opportunity to have our voices heard. Uh, representing all of our adjuncts across the district is important work, and we're glad to work so, with so many fine people in the district. And every time we get together, it feels like, hey, let's put on a show. We just feel like we're the kids that get the chance, so thank you very much for the opportunities.
Our pleasure. Thank you. Glad to hear from you.
Now, uh, we have the staff rep, staff represent. We have the staff update. Good evening.
Good evening, President Sullivan, governing board members, Dr. Gonzalez, CEC presidents, everyone in the room. Tonight, uh, next slide, please. We're featuring Scottsdale Community College as our staff, uh, representative highlights. Beverly Bullock is our non-exempt senator for that campus. Nora Polansky is our non-exempt council rep, along with Angela Thornton. Next slide, please. David Thompson and Isaiah Pierce is our exempt council member, and Rob Owens is our sworn officer at that campus. Next slide, please. So staff representation has been putting in the work over this last fall, or over during this fall semester. Uh, we're attending the Maricopa Essential Resource Summit this coming Friday. We're, um, on various search committees and over twenty-five district, district-wide councils, so we've been very, very busy. Next slide, please. So Calvin and I have been, uh, doing a tour of all the campuses, which, by the way, are beautiful. Uh, we have one more to go on Thursday, Estrella Mountain. Um, while we're there, we're connecting with, uh, presidents, HR directors, and as well as the staff representative, representative, representative members. They have shared governance at each of these colleges where they work together, the staff, uh, reps as well, um, with the presidents and the HR directors. So it's really great to hear that shared governance is happening in all these campuses, uh, which is also increasing communication throughout the district.
Next slide. Oh, we would like to highlight, uh, next week, November first, uh, we are kicking off a, a couple of weeks where we're going to be celebrating, uh, our veteran community and our student veterans. October, uh, November first, we'll be having a veteran appreciation barbecue at Gateway Community College. Uh, this is an event that has gone on for the past decade, and it continues to be an opportunity where we can invite, uh, staff, faculty, adjunct, executives, um, and our students to come and participate in celebrating one another and those who served our country. Next slide, please. Um, also, October, the Heritage Month, uh, we were highlighting, uh, the National Disability Employment Awareness Month. This was a great opportunity to, uh, teach all employees around Maricopa and show them the different aspects of, um, how we can make our workplaces better for those with disabilities. I know that you guys have this presentation. I welcome you to click on that. Beyond NDEAM, it's a year-round empowerment, uh, strategies and awareness for disabled Americans everywhere. Next slide, please. And finally, we have a lot of events going on. I'm not going to get into all the details, but we have our Student Success Conference coming up, uh, Breast Cancer Walk. Uh, we have the second, um, well, Estrella Mountain has the Veterans Run. Equality Maricopa has a Prism Drag Ball coming up in November, uh, the Festival of Tales coming up. Um, and of course, we're all anticipating with great anticipation, the Second Annual Chancellor's Health and Wellness Family Day at Phoenix College. Um, and then also, we're coming up on elections for the co-president as staff representation continues to grow and hit new milestones. And so over the next month, we will elect someone to replace me when my term is over. Next slide. And of course, the last slide contains all our contact information if you would like to reach out to us. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation this evening. Before I move us to the chancellor report, I want to welcome Linda B. Rosenthal Mentoring Group. Would all of you stand so we can see how many of you are in the room? You're an awesome group, and we always look forward to having you present. Uh, my experience is that when I am invited to speak with you, you always grill me with questions about governing board meetings. So, um, I'm getting to understand that I get to share that this year, so I alone won't be grilled. But, uh, with that, we're very excited that you exist in our system and that you are representing or you are being mentored in the name of someone that meant a lot to me personally and professionally, as well as one or two other board members here. So, uh, congratulations, and may you continue to have a great year, and we'll look forward to your graduation in a few months. So let's give you another round of applause. Thank you for being here. Thank you, and thank you to your advisors, too. They do a great job. Uh, so chancellor, it's your turn with your report, and we're ready.
Thank you, President Sullivan and members of the board, CEC and guests that are with us. I too want to welcome the Linda B. Rosenthal Women's Mentor Group, and I'll just provide a little bit more, uh, information about the group that's here in front of you. There are forty-one, um, mentees that are here, and it looks like they're about all here this evening. Nine of the ten campuses are represented, including the district office. Chandler Gilbert Community College has three. Estrella has two, Glendale has one, Gateway has nine. Mesa has six, Phoenix College has four, PB has one, Rio has eight, Scottsdale has three, and the district office has four. And another piece of information about this amazing group and groups that have come before is that since, uh, the program's inception of, in back in the year two thousand, the women's mentor program has graduated approximately six hundred Maricopa women, so that's something to be really proud of. And I wish you much continued success. Look forward to perhaps getting an opportunity to visit with you and definitely celebrating your graduation. And then we all have very high expectations that you will continue to advance in your organization and utilize what you've all learned in this program. So, um, we have full faith and confidence in your ability to do that. So congratulations again. President Sullivan and members of the board, I have, uh, two additional updates. Both will come by way of, um, brief presentations. One will be, uh, the foundation, which will be led by, uh, Ms. Carolyn Lynch, who is the vice president and chair-elect for the Maricopa Foundation, and also Brian Spicker, who is the president and CEO of the Maricopa Foundation. And then we're also going to be providing you with a, uh, with the, our first update to the board on our, um, progress around the strategic planning and its implementation. So with that, I tossed a coin behind the scenes, and the foundation won, so they're going to come up and talk first.
Welcome.
I have to lower the microphone, and then Brian's gonna have to raise it back up, but here we go. Thank you, chancellor, President Sullivan, governing board members, CEC, college presidents, mentors, mentees, guests. Um, thank you so much for the opportunity, um, to speak with you this evening. My name is Caroline Lynch. I am the vice chair and chair-elect of, of the Community College Foundation Board. Um, our current chair, Julie Reese, um, wishes that she could join you this evening. Um, today is her son's birthday, so obviously, um, she is celebrating with him, and I'm happy to, um, fill in in her place. Um, just a little background about me. I joined the board about five years ago, and I think one of the first, um, big tasks that I helped was to assist the foundation and the district with updating their memorandum of understanding. And this, these updates are a product of that MOU, one of the very positive, um, reforms and advances that we are able to implement through, through the MOU. Um, and these, we are so thrilled to be able to come and speak with you and provide additional background information on all the work that the foundation does. But I think it's important to stress that while our bi-annual updates are a part of that MOU, um, really, it's everything that happens in between those updates that reflects the relationship between the foundation and the district and the colleges. Um, it's daily engagement. Um, and I have just been so pleased during my tenure as a board member um, to witness a real evolution in that partnership and that relationship, um, that we have toward our shared goal of, um, um, providing accessible and affordable education to our students. So I'm just thrilled to be able to be here, um, and I guess this is my first practice run for when I will be doing it officially. So, um, I just a couple of points I wanted to highlight, uh, together, the foundation, uh, the governing board and district and the colleges have been able to increase our revenue. Um, we've actually been able to award more scholarships to students, um, in the past a couple of years and partner with the colleges to reform and improve our shared philanthropic mission. Um, as, just as the district did, the foundation also recently implemented and adopted a strategic plan. Um, and that plan was, um, deliberately written to be complementary to and work cohesively with the district's strategic plan. Um, and these strategies together are going to, um, pursue, on the foundation's side, three main goals. Um, a cohesive district-wide fundraising strategy, expanding our organizational capacity and expanding our messaging, um, to, um, reach more members of the community, really get the message out about who the colleges are, um, who the foundation is, and the work that we do, um, to, um, support the colleges and serve the students. So that just, that concludes my brief remarks. I'm happy to answer any questions, um, you may have, or actually just toss those questions to Brian.
Thank, thanks, Caroline. It's great to be here again. I've got a variety of slides. You have this in your material. I won't read all of them. I want to point out a couple of key things with those slides. The Promise Program has really, uh, grown, and you can see, uh, the different cities that are engaged in this effort. I'm going to focus a little bit on the, the Phoenix program. Um, eight hundred and eighteen students participated, forty-five have graduated, seven hundred and five, um, met the continuing eligibility, which was really important, and eighty percent were first-generation students. In our Dreamer Promise area, uh, we had a ninety percent persistence rate in the first, uh, semester of that. And that student support that accompanies that last dollar in is really, really critical. And I'll always be thankful to, uh, Mesa Community College and Mayor Giles for getting this started. Uh, it took several years to, to get that going, but it's, it's taken off, and now we've got to sustain it. You can see in our grant success, um, these, this is just a listing of the, the major grants. Um, but the, the ability to scale, uh, is really important, and that we have some philanthropic partners who are willing to, uh, partner with us because of the, the incredible, uh, uh, work that happens in the colleges every day, uh, especially with our LPN, uh, expansion. Our, uh, be a student's hero, our, our district-wide Day of Giving, we, we reached a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, this year, a thirty-eight percent increase. Um, April fifth, put it on your calendar, that's next year's Day of Giving, and we hope to see, seeing that, uh, increase. Uh, the next slide really gets to the, the meat of some of our, our progress in terms of the inputs, the philanthropic dollars. And I'm happy to say, and you see, purple is fiscal year twenty-one, green is fiscal year twenty-two, and terracotta is fiscal year twenty-three. And so what you see are two areas, gifts and grants. Um, and you can see the growth in grants. We've really been having a different conversation in our community about transformation and the opportunity to help transform, transform our community colleges, but more importantly, our community by providing, um, uh, the skill sets necessary to have a, uh, a healthy financial stability. But if you go to the last column there, you can see several years of thirty percent increases. So I'm happy to say this past fiscal year, ending in June, we reached, uh, eleven million dollars in terms of our, uh, revenue. So where does this go? The output? That's really what's critical. The next slide shows you our scholarships, and I want to call out Carly Melberg here, who, wave Carly, who, who, she's our scholarship director, and so what, um, what you see here is a, is a, a slide. I'm not going to go through it, um, but what you're noticing is, but what you're noticing is more dollars awarded to scholarships, the average award increasing, and the number of awards increasing. In terms of total applied, we're not finished with the application process so far, but we've got $11,000 now in the hopper. So the need continues to grow and we expect to help with our college partners to meet that need with revenue. The next slide is our emergency student supports. It's a three-year comparison. In the 1819 fiscal year, we raised $11,000 for student supports. COVID hit and we quickly pivoted. And you can see what's happened with the awards. And again, the number of students awarded. This is an area that's tough because the community doesn't think of the community colleges as needing basic needs. So this has been a big push for us and continues to be somewhat of a challenge. The next slide, which really gets to, so why do we have a foundation? Besides everything else that I just reviewed, it's because we're your nonprofit partner. Everything we do ensures colleges and students are successful. So now this is what goes into the system from the revenue that we've generated. These are three bars, again, those three fiscal years. And what it represents is 7.6 million in this past year, almost 7.7 million, went in to support either a program, emergency funds, or scholarships for our students. And this is a growth that we expect to see continue. Now, there are future challenges. We know the geopolitical ones that are happening now and what that can do to affect people's level of giving. We keep hearing, and I think it's almost two years now, about a recession or something like that. And then we've got a major election next year. And those are all things that touch philanthropic giving. But we're set to create the narrative that helps people continue to give to this enterprise. And the last slide is a save the date slide. And that's for our Heroes of Education. It's not going to be a typical sit-down rubber chicken meal, right? It's going to be a celebration of education and the arts. And we'll have food stations, we've got curated student art that people can purchase. We've got, the steel drums are coming along with the mariachis and the jazz quartet, all student-based. So we're really excited about this. And then we'll have a real pithy, fast-paced program. So with that, I want to thank our donors, strangers, people we don't know who care about what you do every day for students. Want to thank our board, the governing board, and the colleges and district faculty and staff because it really is all, all of us working together. And so, so this is how we do it. This is how we do it. Come on. This is how we do it. This is how we do it.
Are you planning to do that at the Heroes Dinner or event?
No, I've seen-
Well, you might garner some revenue if we were to dare you to do that.
We can add that to the run of-
Yeah, don't you think?
I've seen that hook. It wasn't used today in any way, but yes.
I have a couple of comments, but before I make mine, board members, do you have any comment? Would like to acknowledge that there are several board members who sit on your board, our governing board. Would you like to acknowledge who they are, please?
We are fortunate and this speaks to the thoughtful approach that was taken with the MOU, which is you are us and we are you. And it starts with the governing board member. And we're blessed to have Ms. Kelly Butler, governing board member, and Dr. Tom Noreeney, board member, who serve on our board and helps set policy, as well as three of our presidents, Dr. Kate Smith, Dr. Greg Peterson, and Dr. Ray Rivera, and our chancellor. Now Susan plays a special role because she is co-chairing-
I'm not dancing.
I don't know, she might generate some revenue.
Well, that would generate some real revenue. So Susan Bitter Smith, governing board member, has been co-chair, working steadfastly and guiding us as we build this effort to really make a different kind of event happen that's really a celebration. So thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, any questions? Ms. Smith?
I bought my ticket, so I look forward to seeing you in mid-November. That will be really fun. What do you anticipate you'll net from that event? Or is it not, is it neutral and then it's more about awareness?
Yeah, you know, that's a really good question. We netted, when we did a virtual event, we really netted $200,000. It was fabulous. Whenever we've held the event, it's always been a tension between the celebration, the coming together, our brand, and being able to be a family, so to speak, versus raising dollars. So we don't push the spotlight, we don't push those things. This is really, so our net that we're anticipating is anywhere from 140 to 150.
Thank you. And the next topic will be the strategic plan. I was wondering if you could share a little bit of an update about where you all are in your own process? I know that there's been some, you know, reimagining. If you could just share a little bit about that.
Yeah, thank you, governing board member, Smith. The board just adopted ours. So we're putting on the public face of it right now. It's a lot of spreadsheets and high level, but, so we'll get you that. The components that are really important aboard, for our board and for the foundation, is the driving revenue in a different way by stepping back and looking at the framework that exists today in how colleges and the foundation raise dollars. What framework, moving forward in the future, can really get us much higher than what we have? 30% is great, yeah. And we started at a lower process in terms of how much we raised. So that's probably the biggest thing. And then capacity, our capacity to deliver, yeah.
Great. Just one last question. Has the Maricopa Community Colleges Foundation led a district-wide fundraising campaign in the past? Can you refresh my memory on that?
Yeah, this was probably, I believe, I think it wrapped up around 2016, 2017. We're launching a district-wide Empowered for Student Success. You'll hear more about that. So we are preparing and just met with the presidents today around that effort. And so you'll be hearing more about that.
Great, thank you.
I think what's important though, if I may, governing board member, Smith, there are certain characteristics that have to be in place for a great campaign. And we've got a permanent chancellor, number one. We've got a strong cohesive governing board, number two. Number three is the district has a strategic plan. Those things are all in place and we've got nine of our 10 presidents on board. That's going to help us achieve what we need to do to move a campaign for student success initiative forward.
Thank you. Board members, any other comments or questions? Ms. Smith? Bitter Smith?
Nothing, just finally coming to 16.
I think most of us will be there with bells on or headgear, who knows? But I wanted to make two acknowledgements. Mr. Spicker, I'm going to start with you. Congratulations on being identified as Valley Leadership's Man of the Year. Being an alum, that's pretty cool. And for anyone else in the room, what class were you?
I'm sorry?
What class?
Class 17.
Wow.
And I think they're at 43, 48, somewhere in there. I had air.
Just as an FYI, I'm from the Dos Equis class, so you're three years ahead of me on that. But anyway, congratulations and we look forward to celebrating with you on November 28th. So thank you. And Ms. Lynch, I want to acknowledge that you're a living legacy to your mom and your dad. And I had the privilege of working with your mother and it still lives with me as a really opportune partnership of so many. So thank you for being the living legacy and contributing to us. That's great. So thank you. You'll have fun next year as the chair. Dr. Gonzalez, so part two.
Part two. Thank you, Brian and Caroline. We appreciate the great update and the good work that you're doing. Next up is Dr. Hernandez to provide us with an update on our strategic wide, or excuse me, strategic plan and what we're doing system-wide to implement this plan. So Kathy, please talk to us about Excellence 2026.
Excellence 2026, thank you. You cannot expect me to dance or sing following that, so just want to-
We can expect you to. The question is, will you do it?
No, no, will not. You don't want me to.
Okay.
Good evening, President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, CEC colleagues and guests. I'm Kathy Hernandez. I am Associate Vice Chancellor for Enterprise Performance and also serve as Chief of Staff in the Office of the Chancellor. While they're not joining me up here today, I do want to recognize my tri-chairs and partners in crime on the, moving this forward, Dr. Richard Daniel, President at South Mountain, and Dr. Lisa Marcio, Faculty Executive Council President. They are my phone friends, as well as some of my CEC colleagues, should you have any questions around some of the activities that we talk about this evening. As you know, we're approximately three months into Excellence 2026, the new strategic plan for our system. Since its launch in July, and really I'm saying August because that's when our faculty came back and so that was the point in which we really truly began to see engagement and looping out of this activity. Our leadership teams and work teams have begun efforts to move forward the associated activities. We have four strategies, 11 goals, a number of activities and milestones under those. And while also building, while doing that, we're also building and designing action plans for each of those activities that will dig a little bit deeper into milestones. As you can imagine with the many teams and the cross-collaborative efforts that we're engaging in this new strategic plan, it is quite a significant undertaking. In keeping with the board's request for a more regular reporting cadence, we present this first quarter update, not only on Strategy 1 and 2, but also an overall progress on implementation, tracking, reporting, and the new strategy planning team. And I understand we have a decision on our board members that will be joining that team. I want to point out that there has been some level of action on every single activity that is embedded into this strategic plan. However, only being three months in, we want to recognize that some of our goals and activities have more substantive progress than others. So we will give a overview today, but not necessarily touch on every activity in Strategy 1 and 2 because in some cases, they're just, while teams are getting up and running, there's not been substantive progress in some of those spaces. Next. So the foundational infrastructure to launching this plan has been our implementation plan, the reporting and tracking structure, and then the design of our strategy planning team. Under the implementation plan, I believe we've already sort of shared that we have, each of our colleges has crosswalked to the new strategic plan. Each strategy, goal, and activity, we have an implementation plan that is really our operational document that the Chancellor's Executive Council and our executive sponsors are using to inform and work with our partner teams and our councils that have been charged with moving each of the activities forward. We will be measuring and reporting success through some key performance indicators. Those key performance indicators are going to be, at the strategic goal level, will be some system lag measures, things that we typically talk to the board about and to our constituents about, enrollment, retention, completion rates, looking at equity gaps and those types of lag measures. And then each of our strategic activities is going to have a project lead measure and a project status update. And that is where we're really starting to see, while we do have some tracking mechanisms in place, what we're asking each of these activity teams to do as part of the implementation plan is a documented action plan. And that documented action plan will be linked to our implementation plan. And that work is where we will be able to quantify project lead measure status. So if we say we are 50% done with a project, then we will be able to say, within that 50%, of the 10 actions identified in the action plan by that team, we will be able to demonstrate what the 50% really articulates to. So we've got teams working on those action plans. And as you can imagine, that is a lot of work for them. And in some cases, they're having to backtrack a little bit because some of the work that is in our strategic plan has already, had already been in progress to some degree. And so we are asking them to create some additional levels of documentation. That action plan will also inform the strategy planning members as we begin to come together as a team and have access to continuous progress updates within each of the activities identified. We have executive sponsors and responsible partner teams for every single action, for every single activity in the plan. The action plans provide that level of detail and helps us to quantify. Additionally, our goals and activities are standing agenda items on the Chancellor's Executive Council. So we're ensuring that this document and the plan is continuously reviewed and monitored for progress, identifying any areas where we might have some challenges, need to remove some barriers, and continue forward progress towards the target timelines. The reporting and tracking structure, as I said, we have a college crosswalk and strategic plan activities that are college-centric. So we have designed a mechanism that will allow our colleges to report up to the district so that we are able to give a large-scale, broad view of what is happening and how the colleges are contributing to the activities and the goals. We also are using this mechanism because in some cases, the activities in the strategic plan do require college action. But we want to recognize that the colleges, in some cases, need to be able to determine what is the action appropriate for their college based on the community that they serve and the students that they serve. So we want to give them autonomy to determine what is best for them and for their teams. At the system reporting, executive sponsors and team leads, the action plans will inform much of that work. The dashboards for these are still in progress. We need action plans designed so that we can quantify. And then those action plans and the updates that come through our action plans will be what informs the design and the content for those dashboards. We will have all of our tracking mechanisms, dashboards designed, final, and ready to present to you at the next quarter meeting, which will be in January. The strategy planning team, the purpose of this team is to propose, is to, twofold, monitor and provide oversight to ensure alignment and progress of the system-wide plans, and then also to review and recommend revisions to the systems comprehensive strategic plan as we evaluate and review it continuously. And then at the end of the year to inform the following year. We've identified core team members and strategy impact teams. We determined that there was, it would be best to keep a small core team that is able to focus on this. And so our tri-chairs will lead the team that is, that consists of our governing board members identified for this team, the data analytics representative, our FEC and staff representatives, a project manager to ensure that we're continuously moving forward, taking action. And then our impact teams, which will be informed by our strategy assignments, the four strategic pillars. And then those individuals that lead the teams will be the team, the ones that closely work with teams like our system strategic enrollment management team and our academic planning team to then bring updates back up to this core team. We would like to follow a quarterly meeting cycle and then we are planning to launch that meeting the 1st of December. Next slide, please, also. Two slides, actually. So I want to move into just some updates in the Strategy 1 and 2. And I want to recognize that these are, are intended to give the board- And I want to recognize that these are, are intended to give the board an idea of some of the substantive action that is taking place by these teams that are working on this, recognizing that it's not the strategic planning team that is driving these, but a multitude of other teams. And we also are only three months in, and so we know we don't have a ton of quantitative data on action, but we definitely have qualitative conversations and information from our teams on the steps that they've been taking to move these items forward in the last three months. The first thing, first item we want to point out is 1.1A2, which is under our expanding recruitment pipeline. We've been looking at identifying systemic strategies to re-enroll our stop-out population. One of the things that we're doing is leading our leadership teams through data dives so we can better understand the stop-out population, looking at students that have been with Maricopa but, and left with no credential and have not enrolled in other institutions, and focusing on the last 12 to 24 months, which is really where we've experienced some COVID losses in enrollment. And so that is sort of the focus, and we want to start to break that out by college and inform who those students are, where they are, and where there's opportunities to catch, recapture them. Colleges have been piloting varying approaches, re-engagement campaigns using social media and contact centers, and then district-wide nudge campaigns. It is noted by our team that is in charge of this that these are practices that they are embedding in our strategic enrollment management plan. And so strategies will be part of that. And this is a space where, just as an example, we know that the, that team will be presenting to this board. And so that is where we would expect to have substantive updates on what is happening in some of those spaces. Elsa, next slide, please. Strategy 1.1B is around accelerating the future of bachelorette degrees through partnerships. So the two areas where we've started to see progress in the last three months is on 1.1B1, developing new partnerships with Arizona Community College institutions for, for us to become the baccalaureate degree provider. We've actually begun engaging in preliminary conversations with three of our Arizona systems. And I believe we have a meeting with leaders in those systems this week or next week to begin to have conversations around that. So if you think through those conversations, we've seen a great response to Maricopa being the provider for some of our sister systems across the state. 1.1B2, implementing a coordinated program viability and sustainability review from a system perspective. This is related to our bachelor's degree, and our Program Advisory Committee has begun to review the previously established viability process for determining future program development, as well as processes and policies related to expansion of existing programs through year five. They're also developing an agenda for the bachelor's degree program visioning session, which will occur on November 9th in just a few weeks, with the goal of addressing and refining program viability and sustainability processes for college leadership. So those are updates in those spaces. And again, we are asking these teams to dig a little bit deeper, give us milestones. And that is where we will begin to be able to talk to the board around percentage of accomplishment within some of these spaces, and then be able to explain why we think we are where we are from a percentage completion perspective. Next slide, please, Elsa. 1.2A, optimize integrated support services and resources. Areas where we've begun to see 1.2A1, implementing guided pathways, integrated support best practices. This is related to our case management advising, Connex Ed. And I believe in Strategy 2, we have an update, so I did not want to duplicate updates, but we are moving forward with that progress as well. 1.2B, scaling high-impact practices. I think we, we all recognized that one of our colleges has been named as, with the Seal of Excellencia. And so this goal is, this activity is around sort of supporting our HSIs and utilizing that framework to align our data practice and leadership. So the Chancellor's Executive Council will be engaging in a development workshop with Excellencia leadership to better understand the framework and consider the institutional alignment and practices. And that workshop, we are working with Excellencia to get that scheduled now, hopefully the end of this term or the beginning of the spring semester. Strategy 1, next slide, please, Elsa. 1.3A, implement a system-oriented fundraising framework to elevate system-wide fundraising. And 1.3B, launch a coordinated student success fundraising initiative. I don't want to steal Brian's thunder, so this is also very sort of informational. So on 1.3A, the foundation team and the college presidents that serve on the foundation board have begun developing options for system-oriented framework. Once those are developed, those will be shared out through his communication forums. And then 1.3B, launching a coordinated student success fundraising initiative. The leaders from the foundation and the colleges have developed fundraising initiative empowered, for student success, which will launch in July of 2024. So those are the updates for Strategy 1. Again, those just demonstrate the actions that the teams are taking to begin doing this work, designing teams, developing teams, and/or moving the work forward through those teams. And again, we'll be asking them to begin to document action plans in association with those so that we can begin to track that and ensure a reporting mechanism. Next slide to Strategy 2, please, Elsa. Strategy 2, a little bit longer on some updates. 2.1A, delivering mobile experiences to enhance the enrollment and registration process. And 2.1A1, enhancing the My Maricopa Student Portal to deliver mobile experience capabilities. Our ITS department has been collaborating with the District Office of Student Affairs and the Vice President of Student Affairs Council. They've launched, in August, they launched student surveys to collect information from students as to their interest for how, what they would like to see expanded. Unfortunately, they saw a really small response rate on that, and so they have reinstituted that, pushed it back out, administered it. And so they continue to work in partnership with our colleges and our councils to try to increase student response so that that, they have more information in that space. We'll continue to work on that towards the target goal of June 30th. 2.1A2, optimize online admissions to deliver new features for streamlined navigation and mobile experiences. Maricopa submitted a proposal for a Lumina Foundation grant, The Great Admission Redesign, on behalf of the colleges on October 6th, and we expect to be informed of proposal status next week by October 31st. Academic and Student Systems, ITS and Staff Representation are also co-leading an online admissions and enrollment service technology rewrite task force with the goal to identify and align on the features, functions, and needs of a redesigned online admissions and enrollment service technology solution. Task force will conclude its work in January of 2024 and will include a roadmap of priorities. So those, those deliverables will be part of our tracking mechanism.
Kathy?
Yes, sir.
If I may interrupt, given in, in the spirit of time here, and the items that remain for the remain, the rest of this agenda, as I'm looking, what are some of the highlights of the remaining items that you might want to point out? Because our, our board members have been provided with the slide deck in advance and may have some questions that, already on things that you've presented. So we want to make sure that they're given some ample time to ask any questions that you might have. So is there anything in the remaining slides that you'd want to highlight briefly and then give them an opportunity to ask any questions? Thank you.
Sure. So I think the majority of the remainders are technology-related, and all of those are in process. I don't know that there's any that we would particularly want to highlight one over the other. The last that I might highlight, just because it's not related to our student technology goals, is the last, which is Strategy 2.2A, to assess and recommend strategic funding models. So our Advisory Budget Committee has been working on formulating recommendations for a new strategic funding model, and also for formulating and presenting Phase 1 of a differential tuition model. So we would just like to update and note on 2.2A1 that the work is progressing collaboratively. And while that goal was intended with a target date of September 30th, I think we probably chewed off more than we thought in the planning and recognized that that might have been just a little too ambitious. And so that team has said that they will have an anticipated completion date for those recommendations by the end of November 2023. And so we just wanted to recognize the, the change in that target date. And then the plan for, and moving forward on differential tuition is on target, and we expect recommendations provided by that team within the targeted timeline.
Thank you, thank you. I think we need a score update before we, you know, that's part of the strategy of today's meeting. Mr. Mccone, do you have an update for us? Makes me nervous. Oh, well, okay, so moving into what's really important. So thank you very much for your presentation. I appreciate that the slides are very detailed, and we can respond to those. So we can perhaps, to Dr. Gonzalez's point, think sometime, how we might look at highlights and maybe put all this in a one-page benchmark, threshold, outcome.
One of, one of the things we would like to ask the board, particularly the two that will be joining our committee, is what would be the best way to give the substantive updates that the board is looking for without a significant amount of detail in the spaces? But since we didn't have quantitative data today to really share progress, we wanted to make sure to demonstrate that there was substantive action happening in multiple spaces.
Yeah, you've done a good job, so thank you. That wasn't a comment on that, it was just, maybe we can figure out another way. For the audience and everyone else, the two board members who will be serving are Ms. Smith and, and me. We will, I, yeah, Ms. Smith and I will be serving. It is I, I is it, according to my grammar, any other English major out there? Anyway, okay, Dr. Thor, we'll just go there. So with that, it's, thank you. So board members, do we have any questions or comments? I think what that reflects is we have a lot to grapple with and grasp, and thinking through it to acknowledge the hard work that everyone on the team is doing is something we all want to acknowledge. And thank you for, for the diligence that is being put into this. As you know, the strategic plan is our, our pathway. And so it, it means quite a bit to ensure that we're all on the same page moving forward with this. So thank you very much for presenting this. Thank you to your tri-chairs and their leading. Thank you for the work of everyone who's invested in this. I hope there's been some dissipation of the intent for everyone to replace strategic plans, but instead to ensure that they're aligned with this, so we're all moving forward in the same direction. And I've been assured that that's the case.
We've had quite a few conversations, I think, around, both at the colleges and at the district, around ensuring synergy, not only between the strategic plan for the system and the colleges, but also thinking about ensuring alignment with the foundation strategic plan, the incoming strategic enrollment management plan, with the intent that we want to see alignment, not a lot of plans with a lot of different activities and goals.
Okay, thank you. But Dr. Gonzalez, we'll be working together with you and everyone else to move this forward. Thank you, and thank you for your first report. Board members concluding comments on this this evening? Okay, well, there have been a lot of presentations. I know we've been sitting here quite a while together. Want to thank the foundation again, Ms. Lynch, you're dismissed, if you'd like to be. With that, may you have a good evening. So now I'm going to move the board meeting to citizens interim. I have no cards, so now we'll move to consideration for the consent agenda. Want to remind everyone that all, in this section, we take up consent matters that are removed, we take up consent matters that we've had opportunity to discuss before. Do I have any requests by a board member or you, Dr. Gonzalez, to remove any item from the consent agenda at this time? Being none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Narini, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Davis, is there any? So I'm going to ask for a vote. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? By a vote of seven zero, the consent agenda is approved. By the way, board members, your signatures are going to be needed on the item eight and nine of this consent agenda. So before we depart this evening, we need to see Elsa to put our name on those documents. I'm going to move us to the non-consent action items. First one is second read and adoption of governing board policy changes to 2.4 financial condition and activities. Is there a motion to adopt the revised policy 1.2 financial condition activities as presented? Actually, 2.4 as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. Is there any discussion on the motion? Being no discussion, all those board members in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being no opposition, by a vote of seven zero, the listed policy amendment is adopted. Now moving to second read and adoption of new board policy 4.1 shared governance principles. Is there a motion to adopt the new board policy 4.1 shared governance?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Thor, is there a second?
Second.
Was whom?
Kathy.
Dr. Narini, thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? Being none, all those in favor of adopting this new board policy, please vote by saying aye. Any opposed? By a vote of seven zero, the new governing board policy 4.1 shared governance principles is adopted. Moving on, is second read and adoption of governing board policy changes to 4.11, the awarding of emeritus status. Is there a motion to adopt revised board policy 4.11, awarding of emeritus status as presented? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Thor, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, is there any discussion on the motion? Being none, all those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, by a vote of seven zero, the listed policy is adopted. We're now moving to the approval of the proposed 2024 legislative agenda. This was presented, I believe, at the last board meeting work session. Is there a motion to approve the proposed 2024 legislative agenda as previously presented? So moved. Thank you, Ms. Bitter Smith, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Thor, is there any discussion on the motion? Being none, all those board members in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being no opposition, by a vote of seven zero, the 2024 legislative agenda is approved. Lots of work tied up in that legislative agenda, so it'll be a great year. Okay, we're now moving to the employment and separations, August 12th, 2023 through September 8th, 2023. Report, board members, do you have any questions or comments? Being none, moving on to monitoring report, that's the budget analysis report fund 1, general unrestricted fund for the three months ending 9/30/2023. Board members, are there any comments or questions? Being none, we're now going to move to our community reports, and Ms. Butler, I'd like to start with you.
Sadly, I have nothing to report this month.
You're busy. Another, sorry, Ms. Davis.
Um, I went to the Seal of Excellencia, which was great. And thanks to Dr. Narini, I met two wonderful young ladies that I had a great conversation with about dual enrollment. So that was great. And then we, a bunch of us went to the ACCT conference in Vegas, which was also wonderful. I don't know that I'd ever fly in and out of the Vegas airport again, but I'll drive the next time. I probably won't go with Mr. Narini, who had problems. I probably won't go with Mr. Narini, who had problems filling his car with electricity so he could get around. But, um, but the conference was great. When I checked in, they asked me if I wanted to be close to an elevator, and I said, well, I'm supposed to, I should walk a little bit. So they put me at the very end of the hall. And then the conference was, we were, I was on level 15, and the conference was on the first floor at the opposite end of the hall. So every time I went to my room, I got 2,000 steps.
And that concludes your report. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Dr. Narini, would you like to share stories about your car?
No.
Any updates?
I do, I do have some updates.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna go in reverse. Let's see, on October 19th, I was at the Dreaming Together fundraiser for raising funds for undocumented students and dreamers and DACA students. And as you know, that those students aren't eligible for any federal or state aid, so I think the website's still up, so you can still donate. So please, please donate. I was also at the A C C T conference, and I was here on, at Rio on October 6th for the Hispanic Heritage Month, where we had Alejandro Chavez, the grandson of Caesar Chavez, and Alexis Murillo, the Arizona Coyote Foundation Chairperson here speaking. So that was pretty impressive. I too was at, on the 5th, was at the Excellence, coordinating or celebration at P C. On the 29th of September, I was at Gateway's Runway for Success, and it was a very big success. So that was great. But on my, people were asking about my orange shirt today. So if you can see, this is my orange shirt day on the 27th. I was at Mesa Community College where they had the intertribal student organization organizing Orange Shirt Day. It was to commemorate and raise awareness of the intergenerational impact of residential schools on the native communities. It was, it's a day of truth and reconciliation to address the more than 150,000 native children sent away to boarding schools and the impact that they've had. And more than 6,000 never came home, not because they got lost, they just never came home. So I want to thank, and the reason it was an orange shirt, it was started by Phyllis Webster, and when she went to the boarding school, she had a favorite orange shirt that they took away and never gave back. And so that's why we're wearing orange. I thought it was orange because nothing rhymes with word orange, and nothing compares to the, to the, what the student, what happened to those students at the boarding schools. So that, it's just, again, truth and reconciliation. People can share their stories so we can move on. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
I also enjoyed celebrating with Phoenix College at the Seal of Excellencia certification celebration. And then just wanted to offer, in my day job at ASU, I've had the privilege of listening to various presentations as of late about heat resilience and how we will build resiliency in our community as temperatures continue to rise. And so I'll just offer this thought, not a complete one yet, that in an interagency meeting that ASU helped to host, so directors of all the various agencies and are in the state of Arizona, one of the main themes was actually about creating community. And there was much discussion about third spaces, though you're often, your home is your first space, and then your work or your school is your second place. And third spaces, churches, libraries, community centers, or other places where you develop social cohesion and social capital with others are a key part to how we will navigate rising temperatures in the state of Arizona. And while I was serving as an observer in these meetings, I felt like the Maricopa Community Colleges have an important role to play as Arizona continues to navigate these changes. And so I want to thank you for the important work that you all do to help build social cohesion in our communities. And I think that there is opportunity for us to consider this role moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Dr. Thor?
Like most of my board colleagues, I attended the A C C T Leadership Congress in Las Vegas, October 9th through the 12th. And Arizona Community Colleges had a very strong turnout at this conference. I think more than 50 colleagues from around the state. And we had two Arizona-only events, a breakfast and a reception. I had the privilege of presenting a breakout presentation with Dr. Gonzalez on how Arizona is addressing the nursing shortage. And although we had the last breakout session on the last day of the conference, we had a respectable turnout of dedicated and engaged attendees, frankly, much to our surprise. But we were appreciative of the group. Also, this past Saturday, I was honored to introduce Dr. Kimberly Britt to the Phoenix branch of the American Association of University Women, A A U W. And Dr. Britt gave an excellent, inspiring talk on how Phoenix College is furthering student success. And this A A U W branch has strong ties to Phoenix College as it gives up to six scholarships to Phoenix College students each year and has done so for decades. And in fact, the branch has a very large, at least my opinion, large inbound scholarship fund with the Maricopa Community Colleges Foundation. And the group decided that Dr. Britt should be invited back every year to give, give an update. I get Google Alerts about our colleges and the district, and this afternoon, two popped up that I wanted to share. We have always, already acknowledged that Brian Spicker is going to be Man of the Year with Valley Leadership. But Google tells me that the Arizona Technology Council and the Arizona Commerce Authority have announced finalists for the 2023 Governors' Celebration of Innovation. And in the category of transformational leadership, there are four finalists. One is Brian Spicker, President and CEO of the Maricopa Community Colleges Foundation, and the other is Kimberly Toby, who is Instructional Services Manager at Rio Salado College. So congratulations to both of you. And also in my Google Alerts today was that Today aired a podcast that is hosted by the University Innovation Alliance CEO Bridget Burns and Inside Higher Ed's co-founder and editor Doug Liederman. And I listened to this podcast, thanks to Google Alerts, and it was with Dr. Kate Smith, and was really, really wonderful and very personal, and you made us very proud. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Ms. Bitter Smith?
Thank you, President Sullivan. Like many of the board members, I too was at the A C C T Congress and participated as a member of the A C C T Public Policy Committee, which is always enlightening, being an elected trustee and the only one in the room with the rest of the committee that are appointed trustees. Very different perspective on how things operate. We also presented a panel, President Sullivan, Dr. Gonzalez and I were part of a panel that was at the beginning of the conference, sorry, Dr. Thor. But we, we did have a very full room talking about our Public Affairs Committee process and how the board has been engaged collectively, all board members, in advocacy and public issues with the legislature and other elected officials. We had a lot of questions, a lot of follow-up. I had a number of people asking for copies of the slides. Again, there was some surprise that, that board members were allowed to actually talk to elected officials. I think that's a fair assessment of some of the questions we had. But I think it was a real productive conversation and discussion, and we had a number of those Arizona governing board members coming up afterwards. And I was a little concerned they were stealing our thunder, but I, I think they're learning from us and how to be better advocates for the community college districts throughout the state. And that is my report.
Well, thank you very much. It's my turn, so I first would like to thank you, Dr. Hernandez, for bringing today the Glendale Community College students. And they were very impressive, and we appreciate your leadership at Glendale Community College. The other one is that I'd like to acknowledge is, again, Phoenix Colleges, oh, I guess it's not an award. I got schooled. It's not an award. You don't earn it. No, you earn it. Excuse me? Certification, thank you. As a SEAL school, one of how many community colleges in the United, two community colleges this year in the United States? And just wanted to say it was a great celebration, a lot of talent represented by the students. Had a face painting, as did Ms. Davis. But overall, I just want to congratulate you and your team and everyone at Phoenix College for that prestigious certification. So congratulations for that. I had the opportunity to be at Estrella Community College this week and hadn't been there for quite a while and was very impressed with the facility. And certainly, Dr. Rivera appreciated you hosting me and our state Senator Diaz there as we talked about, of all things, AI, cybersecurity, and all of those good topics that are very much top of mind to all of us. So thank you for that. Then I wanted to, oh, I'm trying to get all my gratitude out. Thank you, Susan, for, for running the meeting last board meeting. I heard it went very smoothly, no grammar or other mispronunciations issues. So appreciate your leadership.
I was gonna bring my Latin dictionary with me.
Okay. So wanted to do that. I wanted to go back to the conference. So my room was 3,662 steps from the first meeting that I had, which occurred on Sunday morning. I was the first one of our team to arrive, the first one with the bright and early meeting. I sit on the Governance and Bylaws Committee of A C C T. And anyway, so every day, 3,662 somewhere, multiple times. So I didn't need any more exercise, did not go into the fitness room, and felt that that was sufficient. You know, the opportunity to be at this conference was certainly celebratory for Maricopa. We were part of multiple presentations. We had been selected by A C C T to do so. Nursing, the PAC meeting, we had representation by Dr. Narini on the Diversity Equity Committee. We had representation by Ms. Bitter Smith on the policy. I represent governance and bylaws. And thanks to Dr. Thor, somehow I became chair of that committee. We won't go into details of why that is, but someone determined that we are women of a certain age, and therefore, I guess, that's why we do that. I don't know. That was just the point that I can say. Also, trust me, someone really did come up to us and say they were glad to see women of a certain age sitting in that meeting. You know, at that point, I thought, maybe I should go back to dying, it's a dying my hair, but that's another conversation. The other piece, I did also a presentation with someone else on a survey that is being done throughout the United States, that's doing inquiry of board members, whether you're elected or appointed, of community colleges. And there were some really telling findings that, so we presented, and I was part of the analysis to that. One thing that struck me that I want to call out, our board is totally different. And there was an average statement of how many hours a week board members across the United States devote to their districts. There was some that said two hours. The average, I think, came out five. And I know for a fact that ours are much more than that, and we stand out as one of the more educated, participatory, thoughtful governing boards. And I wanted to share that with you because we do our due diligence, we do our homework. And when we come to these meetings, not only are we delighted with all the presentations, but we know where the work is and wanted to, to say thank you to that. So that was one of our presentations. The other thing I wanted to call out is the leadership that I'm seeing coming out of our district and certainly in Arizona about enhancing the opportunity for people to understand and appreciate the role that community colleges plays in higher education. You know, for so long, we've been considered, in the past, for a long time, there's been consideration that community colleges are second-class citizens to the, in higher education. We know that is not true. And if there's any evidence of that, it is the role that we play every day with you in telling the world that community college is the future of Arizona. Arizona's, I think I used the phrase, Arizona's future goes through community colleges, and it goes through Maricopa Community College districts, certainly. So I want to thank you all for that and acknowledge the hard work, regardless of where your position is. And also thank you, Dr. Gonzalez, for your leadership to this fine endeavor. So with that, I would like to adjourn our meeting, making two notes. One, that on November 14th, because we are having an in-person governing board retreat, the agenda review will also be in person at 4:30, and there will be an executive session following that. So it's another long day. And November 28th, that we're shifting the governing board meeting in the center to 12:00 PM, so we can go and celebrate Mr. Spicker at his dinner on the 28th. So with that, everyone, I know it's been a long evening. We appreciate your attention. Thank you for the work you do. Be safe out there. And update, Mr. Mccone? Whoa, okay. Well, let's hope they don't tie that. Okay, well, then, don't tie me back. Thank you all. Have a good night. See you later. Bye.